I guess what I'll do is call together a special meeting of the City of Urbana Cunningham Township. See, that's the thing that's curious to me. Is that what I'm doing? Anyways, for the ...
[laughing]
Okay, is my meeting of the whole ... Committee of the Hall, okay, I am doing that then. It's a joint meeting and we are here for the purpose of hearing presentations of the applications of social service grants for the coming fiscal year 2007 and 2008. And these are very important grants which are awarded by the city council ultimately to the township, to deserving nonprofit organizations for public service projects. We have a list of, I think, ten applicants who want to speak to the council. I think that we're allowing them about seven minutes, I think, or something like that. And on our agenda, I guess the first one is going to be Champagne County Regional Planning Commission. Oh, I should call Rol? I'll do that then. Thank you for saying such. Clerk, would you please call Rol?
Ms. Barnes. Mr. Bowersachs.
Here.
Ms. Chenoweth.
Present.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe. Ms. Stevenson.
Present.
Mayor Pressing.
See, I was so excited to start. All right. And as I was saying, our first participant is going to be representing Darlene Clopel from the Champagne County Regional Planning Commission concerning court diversion services and senior services. Do you want to come forward and speak to the council? You actually have ten minutes.
Actually, I might not need ten minutes because you have done both of these programs in past and I think that I was invited here this evening because we asked for the same amount of money that we asked for last year. However, we were not given that amount of money last year. So, I think that you view that as an increase that we've asked for. The Court Diversion Services Program is a program that's been, was taken on by the Regional Planning Commission about six or seven years ago. It was a grassroots organization known as VORP, Victim Offender Reconciliation Program in the community. Since that time, we have increased the services to include circle mediations as well as victim offender mediations. And this year, we're making an attempt to increase the number of community service opportunities that would be available for youth. The other development that has occurred since I submitted this application is that we are, we will be also contracting with the City of Champagne this year to provide coordination for all of their station adjustments. So, we're trying to expand to include that and make a more coordinated service of care. So, that's basically it on that application unless there would be questions and yeah.
Yes. Danielle.
You talk about the future in terms of your capacity to serve. How many discreet individuals were served last year during the program?
Actually, we had a little bit lower numbers last year because we had a turnover in staff. Mark Crewe left and we hired new staff people, so we were without a staff person for about three months. Year-to-date numbers, let me see if I can find those for you. I think we've served about seventy kids this year. Not all of those have reached mediation or completed the mediation. The capacity for the program with one full-time person, which is what's included in this budget, is about one hundred and twenty to one hundred and thirty kids, which is what we've projected we will see next year. The capacity with adding the Champagne work will be another half-time person and we've made a proposal for the quarter cent tax to increase that by another half, so we'll have to hire one more person.
You'd have two full-time people?
We would.
And because it's related, have you had discussions with the police department here in terms of performing the same duties as you're doing with Champagne? I certainly were part of conversations several years ago, but I don't know what the current status is.
I did have conversations with the police department. I haven't talked to the chief yet, but have talked to a couple of other people that we've been meeting with the state's attorney. I have another meeting this Thursday to talk about that. We have a model developed of how we'd like to do that and probably you'll be hearing about that from the police chief soon.
Okay. And just final question. In terms of court diversion, do you publish a report or plan to publish a report in terms of that shows how many youth, what kinds of activities they were involved in, you know, what the outcomes of those activities, et cetera? How do you demonstrate outcomes?
We do a quarterly report which lists the number of referrals we receive, the number of kids that make it to mediation, the number of kids that complete a mediation agreement. And at the year-end, we do an annual report of the demographics of those kids. So, it would be age, sex, race, those kinds of things, plus the types of crimes that they've committed.
Is it possible that we, or maybe at least I could get a copy of your annual report?
Sure.
I'd be interested. Thanks.
Anybody else? Yes, Mayor?
Hi. I have a question about whether services are available to people who have not gotten into the court system. We have problems, you know, they're not charged, but there's still a difficult situation between people. So, what is available for those kinds of situations?
Currently, we are not taking referrals for kids like from the school system, for example, that have not had a police contact. However, the schools do refer to us through the police juvenile officers that are at the schools. And as long as they've had contact with the police, we've taken the referral from the police.
So, they don't have to go through the courts at all?
No, no. Oh, no, most of our kids don't.
It's not ...
In fact, we're getting about thirty percent of our referrals now from the court, so they don't go to court.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? I guess I had one myself. Part of the program information you gave us talks about the mediation process and how you have a program for what you call victimless crimes like truancy and other kinds. Could you explain a little bit about how that process works?
There's a couple of methods that we use. One is called the circle mediation and it's basically a similar mediation process, but there's not a defined victim. That could be examples of sort of a bullying kind of thing that might involve more than one child, or youth, I should say. It might involve a fistfight between two kids. You don't know which one started it or how that all worked. Sometimes there are victimless crimes where a kid gets in trouble for, what do I want to say? I don't want to use drunk driving because there's drug court, but similar charge like that where there wouldn't be a victim to the crime necessarily. It might be public property damage and there's not really an identified person. And so, in that case, we would use maybe a surrogate victim or a circle mediation process.
And then you have what it sounds like community service options?
Right. And those are pretty limited at the time. We have a couple of options that we have developed in conjunction with the adult diversion program, things that we know are available in the community that could also use youth in terms of their workers. Most of those are pretty limited. One project that we're trying to start this year is a community garden where the youth would be responsible for growing food for clients that we see at the Regional Planning Commission or that could be township clients that would be low-income clients and they need a food. And then during the year, they would grow the food and actually the Urbana Park District has donated the plot down at the community gardens and will play a Saturday. That would be a Saturday, couple of hours kind of community service thing for kids. The difficulty with this community service opportunities is that you have to have a supervisor and depending on the number of youth at any given week, you may or may not have kids involved and so the scheduling of it becomes a difficult thing. So, we're trying to find things that could happen with how many ever kids need to be there. And also, there could be flexibility with not having it one week or whatever. Another option that we thought, the state's attorney is very interested in is having us develop some one or two session classes that are very short-term. For example, we currently teach a financial literacy class that can be done in a short, you know, budgeting kind of thing in a short timeframe. Kids need financial literacy skills, so it might be something like that that wouldn't be directly related to the crime, but would be a way that they could serve something if it's a really minor crime and be done with it. One of the difficulties with the station adjustment process is that it takes a long time from when the kid does the behavior to when they actually end up getting a consequence months later. And so, we're trying to shorten that time down to as quickly as possible. And community service options that have to do with taking one class or those kind of things would be one way to do that for really minor things.
And who assigns those? Is it something that a court directs them to or is it a social service staff member?
Well, apparently, some of them are mediated. But there's, and there's not a good option if they're not going through mediation. There is, the state, the police officers can do a station adjustment directly and refer the child directly to a class or directly to whatever, but often they don't have time to oversee that and make sure the kid gets to them or figure out what it exactly would be the best thing for the kid to do. And so, that's what we're proposing to do for the Champagne Police Department is actually manage that process.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
The other proposal we have this evening is our senior services program. And again, that's not new to you. We've been getting a huge number of referrals for people to help with Medicare Part D and this year, more Illinois Cares RX because they're related to the same kind of benefits. And we get some funding from that from the East Central Area Agency on Aging. However, we get a huge number of clients and it's never enough to cover the amount we need. Our staff is spending a significant amount of time on that and we do get a significant number of referrals from other companies like Health Alliance and some businesses here to help people with that. So, that's basically that proposal.
Other questions about that service? Darlene, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The next person to speak, if they're here, it would be Deborah Kinney or Amy Leon, speaking for the Champagne County YMCA. Please take a seat. Welcome to the Committee of the Hall.
Thanks.
Special meeting.
Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate the opportunity of being here tonight. I'm Deborah Kinney, the Development Director at the YMCA. And with me is Amy Leon, our Youth and Family Director. The YMCA is a not-for-profit organization that is a programming agency that programs for gymnastics lessons and gymnastics teams, swimming lessons, competitive swim team, sports, youth sports programs with a few adult sports programs. We do an after-school childcare program as well as teen outreach and of course, a lot of fitness programs. That's just a kind of a gamut of some of the programs we provide. And we are here tonight to ask for your help and support and your partnership. One of the things that YMCA is known for is our charitable services. And we need your assistance, your funding support, along with our programming staff and our resources to make a difference in the lives of at-risk, needy children in Urbana. So, we would like to tell you a little bit about the program that we're proposing. We're calling it the Urbana Outreach Program. Amy will tell you about that.
The Urbana Outreach Program will be a component of our YMCA day camp that we offer throughout the summer. The Urbana Outreach Program is going to work by having a project coordinator that will work with children that live at Dunbar Court in public housing and basically go pick them up on a school bus each morning, bring them to day camp, sign them in, and facilitate their activities throughout the day through the help of YMCA camp counselors. The children that would be funded to come to the program would be fully immersed in the day camp program. We break our children up into groups based on age and gender, so they would be broken up regardless of what town they're from or anything. They would be broken up into those groups in place with other children their age that they have things in common with. The program would also work by bringing them back at the end of the day, so transportation would be provided both ways from right where they live. And that's the basic rundown of how that would work. Our day camp program has a number of different components that the children would obviously get to experience. We have daily swimming and we have some structured swim time involved in that as well, so they would get some swim education, water safety. We also have field trips which provide them opportunities to kind of explore the community around them. We go not just around Champagne County, but also to Bloomington, Springfield, places like that, so that they can get some new experiences. And we also do outdoor education trips about once a week as long as the weather cooperates out to the local forest stures, so they learn how to fish, they get to hike, spend some time in a natural setting with our staff. We have a one-to-ten ratio with our staff, so the children that do come to camp will be placed in very small groups with other children their age and with a counselor designated just to watch over them. And it would be a very beneficial program, in our opinion, for the children in Urbana. We currently have a program that has been going on since 2001 in Champagne and we bring children from Champagne's public housing to the YMCA camp and it's been very successful. And we would really like to expand this to Urbana as well to let these children have a similar experience.
Are there questions from committee? Charlie, well, Danielle, start.
Thanks for your presentation. I have a couple of questions. The first is, what's the location of the day camp?
The day camp is located at the YMCA on 707 North Country Fair Drive.
Okay. And the second question is, how much does the day camp cost for children without any subsidy? Like what, if a child were to want to go, what's the standard price?
The standard fee for a child that's not a member of the YMCA would be $125 per week.
$125 per week?
Yep.
And if they were a member, then?
It would be $104 per week.
Okay, for members. And how many weeks?
It's eleven weeks long.
Eleven weeks.
The entire camp is eleven weeks long. If this grant were funded through your council, it would be for July and August for those months.
Okay, so it wouldn't be for the whole eleven weeks, but it would be for eight of the weeks?
It would be for seven of the weeks.
Okay.
The first four weeks would be funded by our Strong Kids Campaign, which is our annual campaign, and would be subsidized by the United Way, which we have a grant pending for.
Okay, so the kids would go for the full eleven weeks?
They would go for the full eleven weeks.
Seven weeks. Okay, that's helpful. Do you know, I know you're probably in the process of doing some hiring, but do you have a sense of how many African-American or Latino leaders or counselors you'll have?
Absolutely. Well, we do have about a fifty percent return rate on our staff from last year. And last year, about thirty-five percent of our staff, that's a rough estimate, about thirty-five percent of our staff were African-American or Latino.
Okay.
And it seems to be a similar trend this year based on the staff we are returning and the staff we recently hired.
Okay, great. And let's see, what was my last question? Oh, since this is a new grant, it's for a new program and it's a pretty significant quantity of money compared to programs that we typically fund for the first year, not to say what this council will decide, but if we couldn't fund the entire project, would you be able to do it at the, what, $14,000 you've requested? Would you be, what would you be able to do with less than that, basically?
Well, I guess it would depend on how much less we'd be talking about. If we were dealing with a smaller amount of money just by a small margin, we would just bring less children to camp simply. But the idea of the program and the way that it ideally would work is that we'd be able to serve, support a number of families, not just three or four families, because, I mean, if the grant was decreased to, say, under $10,000, realistically, we may only be able to support two or three families through that from Urbana and we'd really like to support more, so.
And Charlie?
Thank you. You're on page one of the application. It talks about fourteen hundred scholarships. That's fifteen out of fourteen hundred. Where does the money come from, that other fourteen hundred?
That was from our Strong Kids Campaign and from United Way. We also had a City of Champagne grant last year that funded scholarships so that children, equivalent program from Champagne could, from public housing could come to our summer camp. It's, this fourteen hundred are duplicated, so that's not fourteen hundred different children. That's, and the way our scholarship program runs is people can reapply every three months for a scholarship. They might apply for a basketball scholarship, later on in the year, swimming lessons or summer camp. So, it encompasses everybody.
So, fourteen hundred over the year?
Over the year, yes.
And, you know, given that you're getting money from United Way and these other programs that are not necessarily Champagne, what's the current ratio of Urbana to Champagne children?
I believe when we pulled the statistics last year, it was about fifteen to twenty percent of the children that live in Urbana. And the remaining eighty-five to eighty percent wasn't strictly from Champagne. We get kids from Mohammed, St. Joseph, Monticello, Danville, whose parents work here, and they bring their kids to the camps. But last year, it was about fifteen to twenty percent of the kids from Urbana.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Brandon?
And if you already have a program with Champagne Public Housing, how has that been funded over the years?
It's been funded through the City of Champagne.
Okay.
Subsidized by the United Way and the Strong Kids Campaign.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Yes, Carol?
I just have a comment. The fiscal year for the city and the township doesn't start till July 1st and because of getting contracts and requesting information, you may not actually see any installments of the grant until August or September or even later. Will that make a difference in what you're able to do?
No, we're aware of your timeframe and we can accommodate that.
The most important thing would just be to know if there would be a dollar amount, what it would be, so that we can send us the appropriate amount of children, so.
All right. Other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation, then.
Thank you. Thank you. One last thing that I'd just like to pass out to you before we leave. This is a report that we did at the end of the year based on the program in Champagne and it's just a brief overview of, I think you can take away the results, about thirty options. Thank you.
Next, you have a presentation by Patricia Avery. Is Patricia here? No. No? Okay, we'll have to delay that, apparently. I believe then that that would leave the next presentation to be by Lisa Benson presenting something by the Mental Health Center, the Homeless Youth Program. Are you prepared? Please welcome. Sit down.
I brought a brochure that I'll pass around. I'm Lisa Benson from the Mental Health Center and I am presenting on the Homeless Youth Program. We did receive funding last year. Like Darlene Koval, we didn't receive the full amount requested. We have therefore had an increase in funding this year in our proposal. The Homeless Youth Program is a crisis intervention program that provides intensive community-based counseling and case management services to youth in Champagne, Ford, and Iroquois County, ages fourteen to twenty-one, who are homeless or near homeless. The primary population that we focus on right now has been pregnant and parenting teens. The purpose of the program is to reunify these youth with their families, for the younger youth, usually aged fourteen through seventeen. The older population, we focus on self-sufficiency, working to move them into independent housing and become self-sufficient. The services are provided at least weekly, at times even daily, working with the youth on social skills, finding housing, getting needed resources, overcoming the barriers they're presenting and making them homeless or near homeless, we'll say. We currently are funded with three point four staff, full-time staff, and we're looking to hire another full-time position. We serve approximately eighty youth per year and we always have a waiting list, usually around twenty kids on the waiting list. If we were fully funded, we would be able to hire another case manager and that case manager should be able to serve about twenty youth, hoping that we would then be able to decrease our waiting list and serve all the youth that we currently receive referrals for. That's an overview of the program. I can field any questions and there's an overview also in the brochure.
I have a quick question, which is, I've been following the news reports over the last few years in terms of the number of homeless youth increasing pretty consistently in our county for, I believe it's been the last ten years, there's been a steady increase. And this year, it seemed like there was quite a bit of jump based on the Continuum of Cares report. What has your, what has this service looked like in terms of the demand over, say, a three to five-year period going back in time?
It's been consistent. We get referrals month after month and we serve as much as we can. We're always in trying to increase our staffing to serve the youth that are coming in. As I said, we always have at least twenty on the waiting list. So, like you said, it's been consistent over the years and there has been an increase in the past couple of years.
I was wondering, does anybody, anybody else have a question at this point? What's the transition time from getting your first, you know, interview with the incoming client you could call and the stabilization process where they're placed in a pretty stable house?
Good question. We provide crisis intervention, so immediately they can contact a crisis line and within twenty, well, immediately, they get immediate assistance over the phone and referrals for immediate basic needs. Within forty-eight hours, they will meet with an intake worker who will meet with them and do an initial assessment and initial service plan. So, they get immediate service. They may then be waitlisted because we can't provide the intensive case management, as I described, from daily to weekly contact. Once they're open to the program, they then are usually in the program from anywhere between six to twelve months. We can serve them up to a year. It just depends on youth, case-by-case situation. If they, they already have a job, then usually they can transition more quickly. If they don't, there's time in getting their employment skills, finding a job, and then saving money and getting into housing. Or vice versa, if you're working on family issues, that, from family to family, may take more time. So, generally, the kids are in the program on average around six months. We do have kids on the other extremes also.
Okay, I guess that's all. Thank you very much. All right. Our next participant speaks on behalf of the Mental Health Center of the Times Center. Would that, and that would be Gail Elkins. Please come forward and make your presentation.
Good afternoon. I'm Gail Elkins. I'm the Times Center Specialist. I'm responsible for daily operations of, day-to-day operations of the Times Center. Times acronym standing for Transitional Initiative and Men's Empowerment Services. And it is our local transitional living program and shelter program for homeless men serving Champagne County. We can house fifty men in our Level One program, which is our entry point into the shelter, and twenty men in our Level Two program. Any one that comes into our program has three types of screenings that are done. First, they have a mental health screening. They also receive a substance screening and alcohol screening. We sit down, our recovery advocates are our frontline staff, and they sit and provide one-on-one case management with each client. Each recovery advocate is assigned, has a signed caseload. And the clients are required to meet with their assigned staff person at least a minimum of once a week. They can stay in our transitional living program and shelter program in Level One for at least a year. And then, in our Level Two program where we house our twenty men, for twenty-four, up to twenty-four months. On an average, in our Level One program, I would say the men probably stay somewhere around three, three months, three to four months, if you would average out the length of time there. We provide our recovery advocates, as I said, provide one-on-one case management. They're responsible for their shifts. We are a twenty-four hour facility. We do not close. We also have a community soup kitchen, which we serve three meals a day. We don't close. We're open three hundred sixty-five days a year. And so, we provide support services for our clients to help them transition into independent living. And that support services include not only the case management, but we network with other agencies. So, if we identify problems at the time of the initial screenings, then we refer to other agencies in the area that can help with the substance abuse or internal referrals because we are a program of the Mental Health Center for clients that have mental health concerns. And we provide, anyone that stays in the program is required to save sixty percent of their income. If they are unemployed, then they are required to job search, do ten applications per week. And all of this is monitored by the case manager that they meet with weekly. We provide them with money management, budgeting classes, life skill classes. Uh, we, nurses come in from Parkland and U of I and provide health and hygiene courses. So we network with a lot of agencies, community agencies and schools, to build a support system that if we can't personally provide the service, then someone, our agency from the community can. I guess that's basically an overview of what we're doing and what we're asking for today is the support to hire a recovery advocate, which again is our frontline staff person. Because as we build our program and as we deliver services, we would hope that we would have the staff in order to provide services efficiently and effectively.
Does anybody have questions for Gail? Yes, Danielle.
Yeah, thanks for your time this evening. I have a couple of questions. In referring, say someone does need substance abuse counseling or drug rehab, do you, are you finding that folks are able to get into drug treatment who you refer? Or is there a bottleneck in, in that regard? And who do you refer folks to?
Uh, we have referred to long-term treatment programs outside of the community if we weren't able to get into Prairie Center. But most of our referrals will go into Prairie Center. There were some things we were doing with ACES and, um, those were probably the two main. I have a intake case manager and that's basically her responsibility. She administers the screenings, then she connects and makes the referrals to the substance programs. But yes, there is, there are often waiting lists and, um...
How long, how long of a wait is it to get into Prairie Center?
There's been...
Realistically?
Maybe a month in some cases.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and folks, your clients who are referred to Prairie Center are, they go for free? Or where does the funding come from that supports their substance abuse counseling?
Uh, for their screenings and things like that, uh, we, the case, the recovery advocate will often call around to try to see if we can find us some support for them to come up with the money to have the screenings if necessary. If it's someone, it's, uh, sometimes the guys will be doing day labor. And so we encourage them to take something from that day labor and go and have the assessment, pay for the assessment to be done. But oftentimes, the recovery advocate is making phone calls and trying to find some agency or some faith-based, um, community.
There's not kind of one central place where the money comes from to help with substance abuse counseling?
No.
Okay. And my second question is about what percentage of the folks who are regulars staying at the Times Center just came from the Illinois Department of Corrections? Like, what percentage does it look like?
Um, that's probably a, well, let me, let me, I would say a small, smaller percent are from the corrections. And but that's because they're not trying to, so enter the program. It's more because of, um, we do kind of limit the number of releases that we will take in our facility at one time.
Oh, you do? What's that limitation?
Uh, probably about, uh, five, five, about five at any one given time.
And, um, the reason I'm asking this question is because this is actually a chance for us to get a picture in some ways of social services in our community. So it's not specifically about the application, but the opportunity to learn about what the current state is. Are you finding that the Illinois Department of Corrections is setting up the needed services for people after they are released? Or are folks really on their own and you're in a situation where you only take five and there's no one really supporting them in that transition? Like, what's the, what's the current story?
Several of the guys that come in from IDOC, which we go through a process, we just don't accept anybody just because they're being released from IDOC. There's a placement officer that we work with and we kind of still want to make sure that that person is a good fit for the Times Center and the community. And, um, of some of the obstacles we face is when they come out, they come out with no identification. And so then the process starts of us, well, you want them to try to get a job, but you can't get a job because you don't have a birth certificate, you don't have a proper identification. So then that's the recovery advocate works with that person to try to get them the proper ID that they need so they can even begin the process. So that's one of the big obstacles. Now, um, the parole agents are good about coming and, and being there to meet with their parolees on a regular basis. We have a pretty good relationship with them. But as far as any other support, we're probably their support. I mean, we're the ones that are sitting there trying to help them put the pieces back together.
There isn't really other agencies, so maybe Restoration Ministries is taking folks? Okay.
Well, um...
You would think if we're paying thirty-five thousand dollars a year that they could get them an ID at the end of that period, but...
We've had several meetings regarding that, but that hasn't happened.
We've been talking about this for years. This is totally ridiculous, but go ahead.
Ms. Carol?
Actually, it's, is that the Level One or the Level Two program? The, that you take only a small amount of IDOC?
Uh, Level One. Because basically in the Level Two program, we're trying to get people through Level One. We've identified that they're working, um, they're following the guidelines, they're, but they may need more time to put the pieces together. And so the referral, you know, anyone that's in Level One can apply for Level Two. But because that, that a recovery advocate is working one-on-one with that individual and kind of helping them through the process, you kind of get a good sense of the guy that's really serious about going into Level Two and wants to be a part. Because once they enter that Level Two, you know, the responsibilities go up even more. And so, um, we want to make sure, or hopefully that it's successful in Level Two for the twenty guys that go back into that area. But, um, in the Level One program, um, that's where, um, your question?
Yeah, I was thinking, is the, you know, more of the, and I know it's not an emergency shelter anymore, but, you know, that just to house someone. And Danielle, just to address some of the things that you brought up about persons released from IDOC, uh, we get a small percentage of people coming to the township office applying when they've just been released. And it's, these are people that would have been released to Urbana addresses or possibly no address. And if they've been referred to the Times Center, they wouldn't be our client, but we could talk sometime about some of the problems that the people have when they come to see us.
So actually, Department of Corrections releases are possibly eligible to town, for township funding?
Sure, yeah.
Mr. Lewis?
Over the, over the duration of these men at the, at the Times Center, um, what kind of success rate would you say you've had? Just anything, anyway, you want to convey.
Well, when we talk about success to, um...
Complete the program.
Complete the program. I would probably say that seventy percent of our guys that's in Level, the Double Two program successfully complete the program in the sense that they move out to independent living and leave with some form of a starting savings or some, of that nature in order to move out of the Times Center into the community. I would say about seventy percent in our Level Two program are successful in moving out to independent living.
Great, thank you. Mary, did you have a question?
I did have a question, but just to follow through on Robert Lewis's question. Uh, you have twenty in your Level Two?
Yes.
And how many do you have at Level One?
Fifty.
Fifty.
Capacity of fifty.
So, so the answer to your question, I suppose, would be fewer than half then, right?
In Level One?
Yeah, because you only get twenty from Level One to go into Level Two and then seventy percent of that. So the overall, would, you would have fewer than half that would complete the whole thing. But my question...
Oh, okay, that's two percent.
Yeah, my question was about, um, how is your service demand? I'm sure that there's more demand than what you've, you've got available to serve people. But how have the number of people you've served changed over time? You, you expect a small increase for next year? I mean, ten years ago, was it about the same number or half the number of people or what?
I really couldn't answer that honestly for you. I really don't know ten years ago up to today.
Or even a few years ago?
But I will, I will say, um, that there, there are times of the year that you see a larger number or the numbers increase. For instance, in, in the winter. That's why we partner with a couple of, um, local churches and Restoration Urban Ministries. It's because of our capacity, we can't handle the numbers. Well, once we hit that fifty, that, that's on Level One, that's the most we can handle. And so it's been very beneficial to us for the last couple of years to partner with them because they've been handling the overflow. We process everyone through the Times Center, but then they will send over a van or a bus to pick guys that we can't take during the winter and house, you know, keep them overnight there at their facility. So, um, I guess in answer to your, I don't know if I really answered your question. I could tell you there are increases in numbers seasonally. And you kind of see that continue over a period of time.
And do you see the numbers grow every year also?
Uh, we, our numbers have increased, um, just overall, unduplicated numbers have increased over the last couple of years.
When you're at your maximum and it's a, you know, very bad winter day, how many people, what's the most that you have to, to send to the churches? How many more people besides your seventy?
Uh, they've been able to handle fifteen at their, at their sites.
Thank you.
And that's the maximum that they can handle. And we have sent fifteen, the maximum, to them.
And do you turn people away?
Well, we try, yeah, we, we try to refer them over to Salvation Army or if rest, like, um, I'll give you an example. Say First Presbyterian, because they will rotate from week to week, each of our partners would rotate, the overflow. And so if First Presbyterian, um, had their fifteen and they couldn't take anymore and Salvation Army couldn't take anymore, we'd call Restoration. Even though it wasn't their week, could they take that person on? And sometimes you just can't do, it's, it's nothing really you can do.
Thank you.
And I haven't had a chance to ask my question either. So we're, we're kind of moving along in time, so let's be efficient. Thank you. Carol?
Okay, just quickly, I think ten years ago, or I don't know when it was, the, uh, the Times Center was the men's emergency shelter at McKinley Foundation and was not part of the Mental Health Center at that time. So I think you're looking at two very distinct programs and to compare the numbers served, um, probably wouldn't do justice to either one because they're, they were just different.
And I guess I was wondering myself, one or two things. Are the people you serve basically from the community? Do you get a lot of people who are moving through? I mean, do you have homeless people who arrive who are really not in the community very often?
We have people that are not from the community, but predominantly, um, they're from, um, within the county, even from within Champaign and Urbana.
My other question was, um, what do you do in case of repeated, repeated, um, how do you handle a person who's returned homeless again to the center? Do you have stipulations about that?
Uh, one of the things we did in the last, because of the recidivism, uh, one of the things we did was at first, when we were a shelter, it was thirty days in, thirty days out, and you could just, you know, continue that rotation. And so in the last couple of years, what we did was, um, we went from thirty days to a ninety day. To try to get people to really think about, you're here, let's try to get you involved in the program. You have a year to be in this program, let's try to move you forth so that when you do leave, you don't have to come back. And so we increased it to ninety days. So once you leave, whether you leave voluntarily or you're, or, you know, administrative discharge from the program, you're out for ninety days. Do people come back? Yes, they do. But, um, you know...
But that's like...
We started the step of trying to keep people from coming.
Okay, thank you.
Coming back at that.
Thank you, Gail.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Is that it?
That's it, thank you.
And I do have some brochures I'll leave with you.
Our next participant will be representing the Urban League, the Summer Youth Employment Program, and that would be Ray Coats. Please come forward.
Good evening.
Pardon me? Special Director.
On behalf of Urban League, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to present the information about this program. The Summer Youth Employment Program, in its ten-plus years of existence, is a program that is primarily designed to provide employment skills and training to the youth of our community. The program in specific targets sixteen- to eighteen-year-old high school youth. In the past, this program has primarily worked with the City of Champaign, the University of Illinois, and several local businesses. We've had a number of successes with this program. We've seen a lot. You know, there's a lot more to see. Our, our primary focus, I guess, is we're look, looking at the skills that are necessary in order to allow young people to get a realistic impression of what it's like to work. It is a program that starts off with one week of what we call employment skills training. And then after that, there's seven weeks of employment, or six weeks of employment, I'm sorry. The, the program is based on trying to place these students that are enrolled in the program in a career path that is similar to something that they have a desire to do. Granted, at sixteen years old, you don't always know what you want to do. And we understand that. But we've also come across several youth that at sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen years old know exactly what they want to do. Because we've been able to have that type of contact with a number of businesses and particularly with the University of Illinois, a well-respected partner with this, uh, program, we've been able to give several opportunities to youth and give them an opportunity to think beyond the basics. There's nothing wrong with a basic job, but there's also nothing wrong with having contact with a dream career. Which, what this program is, that's what we try to get across. We try to encourage people to realize that at sixteen, seventeen, eighteen years old, you really can do just about anything you want to do. That's the program in a nutshell.
Are there questions that, from committee? Yes, Danielle?
Yeah, thanks for coming out this evening. Just to clarify, the majority of the funding for this program is to pay the student wages?
Yes.
Who are located at different businesses in the community?
Yes, a, a number of the businesses that we work with are nonprofit 501(c)(3) organizations that just don't have the funding. But what we found is they're excellent sites for providing skills training.
And what, what percentage of the organizations are not-for-profit that receive the kids?
Well...
The majority or half or what?
All of the businesses that the funding comes for, they're all nonprofit. We, we don't place students in a for-profit business unless that business is contributing to the program.
Okay. That's my main question.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, Charlie.
In here, you talk about the measuring the impact on the community and so on. And you talk about following their, following the kids after they finish. But you've had some kids through this program in the past, right?
Yes.
And do you have any success statistics associated with that? There's nothing in here unless I'm missing it.
They're-
How well they're doing?
Well, one of the things about the program is because we're primarily working with 16- to 18-year-olds, most of them don't continue work beyond that because we highly encourage them to go back to school.
Right.
Now, we have had, like, Miss America, who went through this program. So, we count that as a success.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, okay, yeah, so the kids go back to school and then, but do you follow them after that? You know, if they turn 18, you know, how many go to college? You know, I don't know if this program goes back far enough. How many have graduated college? That sort of thing. That's the kind of numbers I'm looking for.
We, I don't have specifics right in front of me now about the number of going to college. We have had some who've come back, you know, and like, we recently had one participant in the program who wants to work with the program this summer. So, we do, I don't have the specific numbers, although I can put together that information and get it to you.
Yeah, I would think that, you know, those kinds of numbers about, you know, the follow-ups of the children, the teenagers that have gone through this program would be an effective way of demonstrating whether this works or not.
Okay.
You know, that's the kind of thing I would include in this kind of an application, if you possibly could.
Okay.
Any follow-up numbers would be great to have. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay, Mayor Pressing.
Didn't we give you some money last year or this year that we're in right now?
Not for this particular program, no.
Was it another youth employment program?
Yeah, I think there was some funding provided for the Transitional Employment Program.
But I remember it was youth employment and it was to get Urbana students involved.
We didn't fund, we didn't last year.
It was after the formal process? But anyway.
I can check on that in-
Okay.
Wait, can we get the check right here?
Yeah, there's a spreadsheet here.
Yeah, there's a spreadsheet for previous funding. And according to, yes, they did not get funded last year.
Yeah, I recall you saying that you were, that it wasn't through social services, but that we talked about funding through the general fund. But we can look at the general fund.
I can find out that information.
Any other clarifications or questions? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like the only next presentation presenter is the Urbana Park District. Ellen Krisonoff, please take a seat.
Hi. Hi. Thank you very much for allowing us to come and present about this grant application that we've made. The application is for funding for our youth scholarship fund. And the Urbana Park District's youth scholarship fund, it provides scholarships to children in the form of program fee waivers to financially qualifying families with children and to participate in our recreational programs free of charge or at an extremely reduced rate. The program that we're proposing is we would like to fund scholarships for strictly Urbana residents through this program. We currently offer scholarships, you know, to a number of different children and families. But with this money, we would target Urbana and Urbana residents with this. And that's, many families have told us it's extremely important to help them with childcare for the summer months when they're not in school. So, we get a lot of requests every year. The number of requests that we receive for these scholarships has risen steadily every year. From the time I started at the Park District in '95, and at that point, I think we had $5,000, $4,000 or $5,000 requested in scholarships. It's now up to, our Superintendent of Recreation told me it was over $45,000 last year that was requested, and it keeps going up steadily. So, what we're hoping to do is just kind of try and keep pace with that, the requests that keep going up. Last year, we awarded over $30,000 in youth scholarships. And we budget for that. But as every year, budgets get tighter and things, we were just hoping for a little bit of help and support to provide some additional scholarships if possible. We keep records and we can easily provide for you if you'd need that, records of who received the funding, how many, and what dollar amounts. So, that kind of evaluative tool is very easy for us to provide because we do keep records of how much we give every year and to who. The ages of children that we would fund, that we do fund through this program, are ages 5 up to 12. And in many cases, we will find, fund multiple children in a family as well. So, you know, we often do that and have siblings that receive scholarships so they can attend together. I can answer any questions, yeah.
Yes, Danielle.
What's the tuition without any subsidy?
It can range anywhere from $90 to $170 for a two-week session of camp. And that depends on the age and what that camp is scheduled to be doing. Earthscope Camp ranges from $120 to $170 depending on the session. And so, you know, it varies.
And is that pretty much all day, every day of the week for two weeks?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, occasionally, like on the week that, we have Fourth of July fall. That's a cheaper camp because they don't come on the Fourth of July. But yeah, that's basically for two full weeks, five days a week for the full day. Yes.
My kids went there.
Brandon.
Yeah, Ellen, I was wondering, even without this grant funding, have you provided scholarships or sliding scales in the past?
Yes. Yeah, we always do. And we currently have money in our budget and we budget money every year to cover the scholarships. But this year, well, in the last several years, our budget's not allowing us to keep pace with the increase in requests. And we would like to be able to award as many as we possibly can. So, that's what we're hoping to do with this grant is to kind of match what our budget can't quite increase to, to what the increase we're expecting in the requests would be.
Okay.
So, it's that gap.
Thanks.
Other comments or questions? Yes, Mayor. No. I guess I was going to ask, when the kids participate in the camp experience, is that an overnight camp? And where is it located? Or is it can be in any different locations here in the park system?
It's not an overnight camp. This is just a day camp that we do. And they are actually in a number of different locations. We have Arts Camp, which is at the Phillips Recreation Center and focuses more on the cultural activities and arts-related. We have Teen Camp and Earthscope and Nature Day Camp, which all are in Crystal Lake Park. And Sports Adventure Camp is over at Brookins Gym. And so, they're kind of spread out all over the place. So, we can fit them all in that way.
And then, children could participate in using the park equipment on a regular basis without necessarily participating in a structured program, of course, right, during the summer?
Correct.
Do the children who participate come back and sign up for other camps as well? I guess it would depend upon available funds, right?
It would. And we have, we have some fee waivers that we give where we're doing multiple sessions of camp, so they do come back. And then, we also have them applying for different programs besides Day Camp. Day Camp is by far the biggest use of scholarship funds. That's what the majority of our requests are for, are for scholarships to go to summer camp. But we do have some other programs that they participate in as well. And they do come back year after year. And they, we get a lot of positive feedback from that. And as it allows, some families are able to eventually afford to pay. And we find that we have a good response rate when they want to come back.
Okay, other questions then? Thank you so much for your participation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, we actually are a little bit ahead of our schedule. Maybe I should go back and see if anybody here who'd been absent or Mr. Slot has arrived yet. Representative for the Champaign-Urbana Area Project, Mentoring Young Sisters. Okay, it's still absent. David Adcock, Urbana Adult Education.
Hello. How are you?
Very good. About 10 minutes.
10 minutes? You just want kind of an overview of the program?
Whatever you'd like to tell us, to share, to encourage us to support you.
All right. Urbana Adult Education's been around for quite some time. We offer English as a Second Language and basic adult education services for 16-years-and-older people. And over the last couple of years, I'm on the Latino Partnership. And we've had a request to try to find some way to offer some English as a Second Language class in the after-school hours because many of our parents, the Spanish-speaking parents often work in some of the factory positions till 3 o'clock. And many of them also have children at the middle school and there's an after-school program that many of those children participate in. So, our proposal is to provide English as a Second Language services for Spanish-speaking adults, targeting Spanish-speaking adults. It wouldn't just have to be, but some of the instruction could include, you know, being in Spanish. They would have at least one child in the Urbana School District. Many of these, we think, will have children in the middle school as well. But we would provide it at Lille School because that is where we don't have an after-school program that these children are involved in. So, what we propose is to also provide childcare for the children, the elementary school children of these parents. And it'd be two days a week after school from 3:30 to 5:00. In addition to teaching basic language skills, we would really try to stress strategies to help their children in school. One of the things the parents often tell us is they're not sure how to help the kids at school because their own English is also limited. And so, we would try to kind of target teaching through, which contentary instruction is a good approach to teach English as a Second Language. And we would try to use the strategies for helping children as kind of a focus of the language that we would be using with them. So, the parents could learn strategies at home that would help the children succeed in school. In addition, once a month, we would try to do an in-town kind of field trip that would include both the parents and the children to some places. For example, we had thought of the Planetarium, the Children's Discovery Museum in Champaign. There are the Cranad Art Museum, the World Heritage Museum, a number of good resources on campus that we would take both parents and children to as more or less enrichment activities. So, we would see this as meeting the needs of parents in terms of their English-language services and children through the, we would offer recreational and academic services for them from 3:30 to 5:00. And then, the whole notion of parents helping children to be successful in school, which is a whole nother piece of it. And it's for less than $15,000. And one of the things that we've found about working with families in poverty is that there's often a generational poverty factor passed on to the children and it's very hard to break. And we see this as a possibility and intervention that could break it for one generation of people.
Are there questions from members of the committee? I have a question, I guess. During this process, does the parent ever come in to the classroom during class session to observe the class experience?
We didn't really think of building that into this process. It would be something we could look at. The one problem that we're trying to, the need that we're trying to meet is they're often working during the day and get off at 3 o'clock. So, they have a very difficult time getting into the classroom during the school day.
And do many of the parents work at night?
Yes, many of them do. Many of them work more than one job.
That's what I was thinking, actually.
So, they're working two shifts, sure. But it seems to be a time when many of them are available and are looking for classes. We do offer, at this point, nine ESL classes, but they're mostly during the morning and up until 3 o'clock in the afternoon. And then, we do offer a couple nights of evening classes as well. But this is a 3:30 to 5:00 time that we saw as making real positive use of family time there to help all the way around.
I see. Yes, Brandon.
Yeah, I was just wondering if this is a program that you've had any discussion with the school board about funding or levying taxes for funding out of their budget or a program that in the past they've funded or had?
We've not taken it to the school board. It is something we could do and probably should do.
Yes.
Oh, are you finished, Brandon?
No, I'm done, actually.
Okay.
Danielle.
The 20 to 40 folks who would be in the program, they would be funded in total from the $14,000.
Yes.
So, we would be the sole funder of this program.
Right. And we would be offering some in-kind type of services in terms of enrollment and assessment and some of those kind of things through our existing staff. But this would be mainly extra staff specifically to teach at that time and for the childcare piece of it, as well as materials and field trip money and things specifically for it. So, it, right, it would be, you'd be the sole funder.
And my second question is, are there folks signed up to take this program? Or are you anticipating, I mean, how will you ensure that you'll, you know, once you receive the money, it won't be a small number of parents-
Okay, well, we-
-or taking advantage of this?
I guess one of the, I was a principal in Urbana for 19 years at an elementary school. And what I've always found is when parents move to the neighborhood, they know just to bring the kids over. But in adult education, it's a different story because it's a very optional thing. So, we really try to get the word out, advertise any way that we can. And I guess one of the things that I think is promising about this is the parents have been asking for it to our liaison and community people who work with this population. And so, they're looking for a solution.
Yes, Charlie.
This might be more a question for Bruce Walden, but maybe Carol can track it down. I wonder if this counts in any way as vocational education training and would qualify as a TIF expenditure?
It's a very good question. I mean, one of the, kind of a peripheral benefit that we saw is we think it will help the parents as they improve their English on their job skills and their work advancement skills.
Yeah, so I don't know if somebody can ask Bruce about that as the TIF administrator, whether it would qualify?
I didn't realize there were separate funds available.
Yeah, there are.
Good question. Others? Thank you very much, Dave.
Okay, thank you for your time.
All right, moving along, we come to another school district presentation concerning Mentor Ball. Janice Mitchell?
Good evening to the Urbana City Council. And thank you all very much on behalf of Urbana School District for hearing our presentation. And especially thank you for the children that reside in Urbana City and attend the schools. And this evening, I am here to present my grant application, an overview of the Mentor Ball program. And for those of you, if you had an opportunity, to just kind of read the overview that I broke out. Primarily, the Mentor Ball program, formerly known as the High Hoops, which began as just a summer initiative, primarily targeting the children of the East Urbana or the Scotchwood neighborhood. And the reason that those particular children were targeted, as most of you all know, we have certain areas that we just need a lot of positive structured activities for our children, especially during the out-of-school time. This particular High Hoop Summer Basketball Camp was established or developed by myself with the assistance of my husband, who's here now supporting me, and some other people in our neighborhood, just as an opportunity for our children to at least participate- in our neighborhood, just as an opportunity for our children to at least participate in some structured activity over the summer months. The Urbana Park District has worked with us for all three years and donated the space at Brookings Center to allow those children to attend, because it is in walking distance of most of the children. For the ones who did not live in walking distance, the parents were able to transport them there. This program was funded by and has been funded by Urbana School District for the last two years, because I can tell you, the first year, there really were no funds involved. We did it because we just knew there was a lot going on in the neighborhood after hours, in particular during the summertime. And that second year, we presented to Urbana School District, and Urbana School District picked it up and helped with some of the funding, just so that we could have student helpers as well as adult staff and purchase a few equipment items. In all three years, like I said, the Urbana Park District has donated the space for us to use the Brookings Gym. Primarily what we've done is taken what we call the Summer Basketball Camp and turned it into what we're referring to now as the Mentor Ball program, because we wanted it not just to be looked at as an opportunity to play basketball and to learn basketball skills, but an opportunity to have mentoring provided by the adults that are involved in an ongoing basis. And so that we could help take a look at the academic, as well as the social, emotional performance and stability of our children, provide them with some physical activity. And along with Officer Cobb at Urbana Police Department, who has been working with me for the past, I almost want to say five or six months or so, take a look at how the Urbana Police Department can be involved in a positive way in trying to intervene before we get to or prevent, before we have to get to a real intervention part with some of our younger children in our school district. We're also going to be working with the several other agencies to help bring about some of the, what I want to call, learning, some of those social development, social responsibility type behaviors that are so much needed in our children as they grow. We are looking at a, moving from just a summer camp to kind of what I want to say, a year-round activity and involvement. And that's why we're referring to as the Mentor Ball, because the mentor coaches will not just be coaches that will come out and work with our, right now, we're looking at the males, so we did change, because for the past three years, we've had both males and females. And we will continue that for summer purposes, but for the school year, as reports have indicated, our males are probably higher number in terms of the need for intervention and more structured activities. What we will be doing is working with members of the community, from the Urbana Police Department, from other agencies, who will provide the mentoring, as well as the coaching, who will assisting our, what we're going to be calling our quarterly and monthly gathering of all the students that participate, regardless of which school that they're from, participate. And you notice that I have what we're going to be referring to as the Juvenile Justice Forums. And although the forums are, we talked about this, Officer Cobb and myself, they are going to be presented on more of an elementary level. And we know we have to do that, because we want to make certain that by the time they get to the middle school age, the high school age, hopefully, we will have intervened with some of our younger kids, and they will not want to engage in some of the activities that will lead to. So we're really wanting to expand this from just a summer forum or summer structured activities to a year-round mechanism by which children can be helped. And any questions?
Anybody would have, yes, Charlie, would you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. A quick question, is there an after-school program at Prairie School now?
Yes, there is an after-school program. The after-school program, well, there are, I think, at least two after-school programs. The actual Urbana School District after-school program is there. It is a, what I want to call, a for-profit program, so it's not just open to all students, and it is structured more in terms of some kind of recreational activities, but an opportunity for homework to be completed also. And then I think there is also a teen-reach program there that is after-school so many days a week, that students who are in need of additional academic support can receive that.
Okay. I'm just wondering if this might be in conflict with some of the things that go on in that after-school program, or whether, you know, you'd work together in some ways?
Well, we would definitely work together, as I have for many years now, working with the schools, well, Prairie School, which is out in that area. However, but we're not just looking at just the after-school time, because we're really hoping that this is going to be able to have some components that on Saturdays, that some, because I know with a lot of people's work scheduling, it may not be that they're able to mentor or to get with all of their Mentor Ball participants just on the after-school time. Definitely, there are parts that are going to have to be completed during the school week, in terms of the connection with teachers, the connections with the principal, receiving back the reports, whether it's academic or behavioral reports. So that type of monitoring will have to be done. And we're hoping that at least one session is during the week after school. But we are looking for some out-of-school time that they're being in contact with.
And then a question very similar to what I asked Mr. Coats earlier, which is, you've had this program in effect for a few years. Do you have any statistics on how the kids who are in this program are doing in school and things like that?
Well, what I can say is that if I look at the last two years, from the first year, I really can't, but from the last two, one of the things that, let me back up, that I like to say is, from the first year that we started, and starting on a very small level with kids, we just kind of took kids out and said, this is what we want to do with those children, with a real large number. We had at least, I think, two of those students who were going into the sixth grade, into middle school, and they actually made the basketball team, who had never participated in basketball skills, but they were sixth graders, made the seventh-grade team, but they were very committed in the program during the summer. I know that last year, we had at least three of those students who were, and one particular lady came to mind, who had never played basketball, and she actually attended the camp. The parents were surprised, and she made the sixth-grade basket, well, seventh-grade basketball team as a sixth grader. All of those students, for the most part, who start out and who reside in the Scotchwood area, if we have contact, whether they're in high school or not, we continue to be in contact with them. I have not done any documentation to look at how many times they've gone to refocus or been suspended, once they're out of the elementary buildings. I mean, I could really, I could get that information.
I guess it might be something to, some way to keep track of what's going on and measuring your success, because that can help you leverage.
Yes.
And leverage the success and get more money. The, I forgot what my question was. The, do you bring in any of the older kids to work with the younger kids?
As a matter of fact, that's how I think we've been able to not have to hire our, we really don't even have money to hire anyway, but we've been fortunate that we have had what we call the peer coaches, because we've had many of the high school students who live out in that area who do come and help. In the past, the program has always operated on the Wednesdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. And we've always been blessed to have students who've come back to help with the coaching of and the group presentations, because all of our groups actually start not just by going in and picking up the basketball. We always start with a, what we want to call a moment of inspiration, the word of the week. Words of the week are always have to do with respect, forgiveness, all those positive words, what they mean. And those are, whatever word is on Wednesday is the words that we discuss on Friday, as well as on Saturday, before we actually get into the physical activity or skill building.
And my last question, how much turnover do you have in terms of kids? I get the impression there's a lot of transition, you know, Urbana has a lot of transitional students.
Yes.
How does that impact your program?
I think when we look, right now, just kind of reflecting back on the three years, we've really been fortunate in that we've had, the majority of the students that have participated have been students who are, I guess, long-term, or at least three- to four-year residents of Urbana. Because I can definitely reflect on our attendance and know which students have just kind of gone through the second year to third year. Even, and I think I may have mentioned, if not, even though we were really focused on third through fifth grade, we've had several middle school students who was there in sixth and seventh grade have come back. And that's only because they were the ones who started that first year, and they were on their way out of school.
Yes, Marya Crussey?
Hi.
Yes.
I have a question, a couple of questions, actually. On this chart where you have personnel stipends?
Yes.
You're talking about seven months.
Yes, the school, the school year.
Okay, so it doesn't go into the summer at all?
Well, it will go into the summer. However, I've actually applied for funds from United Way and also the school district that are going to partner and hopefully provide some of those funding.
So the school's only for seven months?
Well, no, they're not, but I did, I did all this detailed figuring. I just figured that when we're looking at the Christmas break, that month of December, somewhere between December, January, they probably won't get an opportunity to meet at least maybe once. And I really figured this out to.
Okay.
Not go a total of all the nine months of the school year.
And did you say that it's geared towards students who are from Scotchwood?
Well, the summer component, the summer component is really geared towards students from Scotchwood. During the school year, we're really looking at being able to target the schools where we know the highest need in terms of what we're seeing with, one, some of the activity that's going on with after-school hours for students, but, two, the behavioral documentation from each of those buildings. And right now, I know we're looking at at least four of our elementary buildings.
Okay, good. I think Scotchwood's outside the city, right? So is it possible to ask?
Little parts of it or not.
Or ban, oh, maybe parts are in and parts are out. I wonder if Urbana Township would be another possible.
Okay.
I don't know if they have any money, but.
If you're talking about Scotchwood Manor, that's in the city limits, the street of Scotchwood, there are a few houses that are within the city limits and some are not, so it depends on whether you're talking about the street or the.
Yeah, because it's the same with Dotson Street. The street before, a few are in the city limits, a few are out. So, yes.
Thank you.
And the primary, the larger number of those children are coming from the manor, right in that area where the homes are right behind the manor or beside.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you so much for coming and participating.
Thank you all very much.
Okay. I guess we have one more listed for tonight as a presenter. Maria Thompson, Visionaries Educating Youth and Adults.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come forth and present our proposal. This is Sean Lampkins, who is one of the PhD graduate students who mentor and tutor in our program. Today, I'd like to discuss VIA. VIA is a Visionaries Educating Youth and Adults. We provide a tutoring and mentoring program that was started in 2004. We provide this program in a collaborative effort through the University of Illinois College of Education and the Department of EPS, Educational Policies and Studies. We primarily are focused on African-American average youth in the Champagne-Urbana community. We currently have approximately eight students in the program now, three of which are located in Urbana, and five in Champagne. The three that have been in the program have been in the program since its inception. So we have a very high return rate on the youths in Urbana participating every year in the program. Our goal is basically just to keep the youths on track. We meet twice a week, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, from four to six. We have a component where we, first thing they do when they come in is they get started on their homework. We have about six tutors and mentors that help in that process. We spend time with them, an hour of that time, helping them with any homework and issues that they may have academically. An hour after that, the next hour, we work on some career or college prep-type activities, some ACT test prep. We're exploring that this year. And also just talking about what things, is it gonna, what do they need to do to prepare for, whether it's academic or vocational goals that they may have. And we also do some cultural activities. We take them on field trips. We see videos and things like that, some cultural videos, to try to expose their environment to how do they fit into society. And also, we want to try to work on their social behaviors and academic behaviors in the school system. So what we would like to do is we'd like to help build on the cultural and educational areas that we're focusing on. We would like to, we see the need to have like a library, a resource library in our, in our, I'm sorry, in our meeting space that we have. And we would like to propose this proposal to allow us to build that library. A lot of the kids are, they range from middle school to high school, so it would be beneficial to have some, maybe some teachers, maybe not teachers, but some educational books that, for geometry and math and reading and English and those areas, that could assist us with their academic studies. Also, we were noticing that their social and behavioral, they sometimes have that issue, so it would be beneficial to help them, to help them see what's an appropriate behavior to conduct themselves while they're in the school setting.
I'd like to say, make a few comments. I think the idea of the program is to sort of create a culture with the children, around the children, that fosters excellence, whether it's in their academic lives, their personal lives, or social lives, and realizing that school is not a strictly academic endeavor, so that this is a social context in which this takes place, that there's a political dimension to education. So that's one aspect of what, what purpose I think the library would serve. I would focus on creating a sense amongst the children that education has some personal relevance for them, and that they have a role in sort of shaping that. So the idea is, in terms of serving the needs of the students, we have a group focus and an individual focus. So we would do things like, for each student, we take an individualized plan, which is like an IEP, but not quite an IEP. We take the students' goals, we have them clearly articulate what they want, and sort of work with them on developing those ideas in conjunction with their parents, and then sharing that with the teachers. Then we would bring in materials that would try to meet the needs that they have. And those materials would again focus on social issues, issues of civic engagement, and then also academic excellence as well. And you could think of it more as multimedia center, so there would be books, ACT prep or test preparation materials, guides. You'd also have videos, video, even video equipment, any kind of written material that they could use, CDs. But just to sort of respect the fact that these students are not, that they're in school all day for about eight hours a day, and that half, a lot of the time, they're not going to want to come to the program to simply sit down for another two hours, three hours, and sit down and be quiet. So there's a way to engage them in these discussions that are extremely important for them, that would help them to identify again with the educational process, and also seeing themselves as invested in that process and reflected in that process. So that's sort of the purpose that we think that the library should serve. That's clear.
Questions, then? Charlie, do you want to start this time?
Okay.
Okay, ladies first.
Thanks for your time this evening. I have a couple of questions. What's the location of your tutoring? You said you had a meeting center?
Yes, we are provided in-kind donated space to the College of Education, so we meet there at the College of Education.
In the College of Education? And is there like a dedicated space that where resources would be secure, or how would you secure the resources?
Yeah, I have an office that's also supplied through the College of Education in the Colonel Wolf Building. It's an old school. It's a pretty vast space that has shelving, it has computers, that kind of thing. So we, sometimes if, like once if our class door was locked, we couldn't find the janitor, we went over to my office, which is a pretty expansive space, so that's where we would house the materials.
Okay. And how long will you have that office at the U of I?
For the next three years.
Okay. Have you considered, I mean, having started a lot of different resource centers, I understand the need to have like your own spa- the need to have like your own space, but I'm also asking the question, why you wouldn't make use of the U of I library? Does it not have the materials that you're looking for, because it's a pretty expansive academic library? What's the shortcomings of using a public library, a U of I library?
Because of, because it's a library where you have to sort of share resources with the general public, and given the diversity of the students in terms of what their needs are, and then also their age ranges, it's hard to always have access to that. And what we need is a daily, consistent, systematic access to all of the materials that we can, again, gauge these students in terms of what progress, what they're, what they're working on, and then what progress they're making while working on those issues and those areas. So, and then also, some of the materials are not recyclable. So, if I, if we take a ACT test prep book or a PSAT test prep book, we need them to be able to feel like they're taking the test under test conditions, here's how you write in the margins when you're taking the test, and that's your own individual strategy, so they just can't be shared again with the, with the general public.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions? Yes, Charlie?
I take it these are high school students, sixteen to eighteen, or?
High school students, middle school students, one elementary student right now.
Oh, really? Okay.
Predominantly, high school students, yes.
Okay. And how do they get to the College of Ed to?
We actually transfer them. We provide transportation. We also, we don't not, if the parents want to involve, be involved in transporting, we encourage that.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, we provide the transportation to and from.
Yeah. I was thinking, you might be able to get some of the materials you want, or maybe you already do, from the local schools. I don't know if you ask them for textbooks or whatever, especially, you know, students are taking classes and you might be able to get textbooks for, for each class or something, or for, for some of the, for some of the participants from the schools themselves. I don't know if they do that.
Yeah, we're in the process of trying to forge those relationships with the teachers specifically. Of course, that's always a very dynamic process, because each teacher has their own orientation and restrictions.
Right.
And having taught at Booker T. Washington a couple of years back, I can sort of, I can sort of respect that space, so I don't push the agenda with teachers. But also, each individual tutor is responsible for communicating with each individual student's teachers. So, it's just sort of a process that we're sort of working through, and then also working with the district itself. It's just, it's a relationship that's just now being formed, but it is underway, so we certainly would entertain that suggestions.
Yes, Robert?
What's the selection process for the students that you receive?
We're looking at basically any student that has any issues, whether they're behind in their work, teacher referrals, parent referrals. A lot of our students come from our community outreach person and teacher referrals. We have a waiting list right now of students that are wanting to participate in the program, but due to limited resources, we're not able to have all of the students participate. But we usually get our, it's not really on a basis of, well, they have to have so many Ds or so many Fs or anything like that. If the teachers feel that they have a need, that this particular student would benefit from the after-school tutoring and mentoring program that we run, then we will meet with the teacher, meet with the student, meet with the parent, and see what those needs are and see how we can address it.
Other questions? I have one, I guess. How did you originate the program? From what, is it, did you establish this yourself? Is this, did you create this program to, or initiate the process?
Yes, we created the program because we identified that there were quite a few, just in speaking with some of the youth in the community and some of the teachers, and I have four kids in the school, school system, I've been in both school districts, and hearing some of the social and behavioral issues and some of the, just issues with, you know, not turning in the work on time and just needing to have someone to follow up with them to make sure that their, the youths are actually engaged in their education and excited about going to class and, you know, and seeing that if they turn in their work on time and spend that type of time on their homework, then they can actually see a benefit from that. That is how we kind of came about where this after-school program was, was something that was needed in the community. I can see where teachers need assistance. I mean, parents working late hours and things of that nature, and that's something that we saw as a need, and we wanted to provide that.
Yeah, I'd like to chime in on that as well. Like I said, I've been, I've been in Champaign, I'm not from here, but I've been in Champaign since 1996. I've worked in school districts and after-school programs as a teacher's aide, and then also as a teacher, then also through my community service projects that we've done. Even as recently as this weekend, there was a peer leadership conference that was run through the Mental Health Center over at Champaign. And a lot of the repeated messages that I get from the teachers and the students alike, parents also, is that the students need something that's systematic and consistent and that allows them to be engaged, that engages them, that there just aren't the structures that are in place, particularly for the teenagers, so that they can have some way to find, you know, maybe another outlet or. So, that's one of the, one of the things that I think attracted me to the program. So, I didn't come in until, I think I was, I participated in the first year, but I wasn't, you know, central in developing the program, but that's one of the things that.
And one of the things, one of the things that's been good to, to receive feedback on is from the teachers. We, we do a survey from all of the students, teachers that have, that we've worked with, and to find out, you know, has this helped our involvement and what we're doing with these, with these kids. And they, they're just like, you know, hey, we wish there was more of you. They really can see a difference in them getting their work turned in and, you know, feeling responsible about, you know, paying, this is, I'm responsible for my grade, and I have to, you know, you know, I'm in control of it, so, you know, if I just spend the time like I should, then I'll get the grade that I'm supposed to get, so.
Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Other comments, I guess, for caught up. Thank you so much for your participation.
I was on the spot.
I believe that that covers the presentations for the Consolidated Social Service Funding Pool that have come before the City Council Committee, seeing no further participant